All right. It is seven o'clock, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. In our first order of business, I'm going to ask that you join me in Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome, everyone. First order, I'd like to make introductions. I'm Lisa Whelan. I'm the mayor. To my left are council members Kathleen Refkin, Ann McGregor, Peter Vickery, Claudia Lacy, and then on the end, we have our city engineer, Allison Fowski with WSB. And then staff present this evening is Gary Peters, our Public Works Director, Ally Paufus, who is our administrator, our Director of Administration, and then behind Ally, we have Ann Meyerhoff, who is our city clerk and also our minute taker. And to my right, we have Jasper Krugel, who is our city administrator. Brian Grimm is our finance director. David Abel is our community direct, Community Development Director. And then Sarah Sensala is our legal attorney with Kennedy and Graven. And then on the end, we have our Chief of Police, Paul Falls. Next is approval of our minutes of our agenda. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda? Then hearing none is our motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Vickery. Any further questions, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with a aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. Next, our first item then is a special presentation by Mr. Grimm, Finance Director. We're always so excited.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council, this is our last financial update for 2023, or for the fourth quarter. See, we have a relatively big crowd here for this item, or other items, I guess. So this begins on page three of the packet, and it's pretty much verifies, you know, some of the things we've been talking through even, you know, later in the summer and fall through the budget process. Our building permit revenue did come in, you know, better than projected based on some of those commercial projects out in Woodland Cove. And it sounds like the, I haven't been out there yet, but the new grocery store opened today, so.
It's beautiful.
I think I got to get out there the next day or two, so. So obviously, that, as well as just our strong performance in the residential housing market, I think we went over 100 new homes again for this year, so that was good. Another revenue item that was mentioned there was just some of those additional revenues in, you know, via the drug task force that we participate in, so that helped the bottom line, and obviously is a altruistic or good service to get those type of items off the street, or whatever. And then, as well as just some of our investment in market value, they were probably everyone's seeing in their accounts, they have that things did better in '23 than they had in the last couple of years before that, so that was good. Then just on the expenditure side, you can see most things came in pretty much where we thought. Couple areas, I mean, I think public safety was just a little bit over, just for some, you know, overtime and some other items there. On the bigger item was the snow ice, where when we used to get snow and ice back in January, February, and March of this year. Obviously, for 2024, we'll be, of '23, obviously, was, you know, last year, we had a winter and this year, so we should be sitting better for '24, but that was actually an item that Gary and his crew needed, you know, had a bunch, a lot of overtime, as well as a lot of, you know, salt supply, you know, to keep the roads clear, so. Other than that, you can see the fund balance for the general fund is about a little over $3 million, $2,026,000. And compared to our expenditures of budgeted in the general fund for 2024, that's about a 45% as a calculation, or about $6.8 million is our budget for this year in the general fund. And then, I guess the last item to mention is just the cash and investments that was listed, I think, on page 17 or 18, and all items are sitting at good cash balances, other than the one small negative cash balance is the Maple Crest Debt Fund from, I think that was originally back in 2007, 2008, that has a small negative balance, just based on some prepayments of assessments coming in, you know, back 10, 12 years ago, that's sort of lower than our interest revenue, so we'll have to, want to probably address that, maybe at one of the upcoming meetings, or I don't know if the mayor even asked somebody.
Yeah, I talked with Brian about this. I think we should bring that up at a work session, because going forward, we're going to have these negative balances, and we're going to have to be taking money out of our general fund. And because this year, or in 2024, and that's the reason I asked on the current road projects for 2023, we were under budget, so I think we should get those numbers together and then maybe even pay off that debt, because in the long, over the next four years, we could save ourselves about $50,000 to $60,000. Otherwise, we're paying interest on top of interest, so to speak. So if you could bring that back at our next work session with the numbers, and we also have to look and see when the debt payment is, when we can call it. I believe we can.
I think so, we'll definitely check, yeah.
Why don't you check on that, and then run some numbers for us to, so we can make that decision at that time.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Did anyone have any other questions from council on the information that was in the package?
I had talked with Jasper today, and when I were very, some very definite specifics, and it's fantastic. Again, staff and everybody pulled in really well for that last quarter, so that we ended on a very nice note in 2023. And again, I don't like to put in little admonishments, but we really should try to stick to budgets, because, for everybody. And when you go through the whole thing inch by inch, you basically come up with, some people are sticking to budgets, some people aren't, and yes, there are extraneous circumstances, but we ought to be able to build some of that into the budgeting in the beginning. So, and that's not to you, that's to everybody.
That's fair enough, yeah.
I had a question under the administration. The dues and subscriptions, subscriptions, why was that so much more than what we budgeted for? We budgeted 21, and it came in at $32,000. You know, Jasper or Brian? On page 10?
10.
Of the packet?
Yeah. I could check in. I mean, I know, you know, there has been obviously some different training things that have been an emphasis and stuff, and as far as, you know, making sure people are able, you know, to get the appropriate training, whether it's state conferences or different things like that, so. But yeah, I can double-check that, maybe just, you know, run the detail, that, see if, what's there, anything that stands out there, so.
Okay.
And bring that back.
Bring that back, too, yeah.
At the same time.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Just one more, the elections, the vehicle and equipment, is that just the new ballot? Like, what kind of equipment for the elections? Is that just the?
I think the amount we have to spend out of the 2020, that would have been out of 2023, is more like the, it's almost like the rental with the county, and I think some of that's increased from what it used to be, so that'll have to be bumped up in the future off-years, I guess, you know, for the 2025, I guess, but 2024, obviously, our election budget's back up more like $20,000, just based on having the three elections, or, you know, so.
Yeah, it's going to be, one year it's going to be way down, and then next year it's going to be up.
Yeah, it's just we had only budgeted 500, and it was 26.
Yeah, I think the county had some additional things that they needed to bill out to the member cities and stuff, as far as.
Okay. Thank you very much, and again, good news that we're now at a 45% fund balance, which is good. We'd like to kind of be in that 40% to 45% range, so that's a good, good news there. All right. We'll move on to persons to be heard. We have several people signed up this evening. I'm going to start out with Tom Donahue. What I'm going to say is, come up to the podium, you need to state your name and address, and then you're going to get about three minutes or so to address the council on something that pertains to the city, but Mr. Donahue?
I'll have Becky Han go first.
Oh, okay.
Good thing I wrote my notes.
There you go. So Ms. Han, again, come up to the podium. As you know, we don't take any action on items pertaining to the city issues this evening, so.
You really don't even have to take any action.
All right.
This is just a proper notification, because we want to be transparent. So I am Rebecca Han. I live at 5990 Sunnyfield Road, that's the address that I've been at for, or have owned and accepted for 41 years, and paid taxes, and had kids go through the momless time to high school. Ta-da! So I'm along with you guys. Oh, cheap glasses. I wrote this, but the reason I wrote this.
I know you can, I know the feeling.
The reason I wrote this out is because, if any of you know me as a tennis pro, you know I tend to talk a lot. Well, I didn't want to take too much time, so I wrote it down so I could read it. So, there you go. Well, it's the red one, so I can find them. Okay, so thank you for giving us an opportunity to say this and that, and thanks for the curveball, um, for the first. Okay, so I wrote this letter to Kevin Moore at the high school, and brought it over to him specifically. This has everything to do with the referendum that was passed in November of last year. So here's what it says. Kevin, as you may recall, a few of us attended a school board meeting on the 8th of January. At that meeting, I mentioned to you that I had just learned of your building bond, which would destroy many trees and devalue mine and my neighbor's properties. At that meeting, I requested information from you regarding your efforts to inform all of the residents of the intentions, and you promised to get that to me. Two weeks later, your parcel arrived, sounds like I'm tabling, doesn't it? Just trying to be chronological here, arrived without the Laker newspaper, and according to you, that was the main vehicle for giving the community greater details regarding the school board's building bond. My tone is, okay. Our committee has been looking into pertinent details regarding the school board's efforts, or lack thereof, to inform the taxpayers on their building bond. According to the people we have spoken to in the past seven weeks, thanks, in the past seven weeks, only one issue of the Laker newspaper had greater details in it. I don't have a copy like that, so I said to him, you didn't have that in the package, so perhaps you could send that to me, okay? So that will probably arrive. Anyhow, accurate information regarding the real amount over a designated span of 25 years would not be 93.4 million, it's actually closer to 170 million with the interest, et cetera. And the community doesn't really know that. They agreed barely by a small margin, that was passed, although I never saw the, I don't know about the voting and how, how many people actually voted, and whatever. So here's the problem. Accurate information wasn't shared with the community, nor was telling them exactly what they're going to do. Once I found out about this, Tommy called me, and I said, no, I didn't want to think about it. Then I went to the neighbor across the street, Barbara Ruland, and her property is going to, but their, the school is moving their stadium, and their stadium's going to touch her property, and the tennis courts that they want to put in are across the street and touch my property. I don't have any problem with tennis, okay? I have been a tennis pro for 47 years, okay? So I, it's not that. But, okay, so over, so over the past seven weeks, we've been gathering information, and we found out a few things, that no one on Sunnyfield Road, not one person that we talked to, received any information directly. Yet, a few years ago, when they wanted to put a neon sign at the entrance to go into the school, all of us got a letter saying, if you have a problem with this, you can go to the city hall, and you can, well, I didn't go, I don't know if you can go to the, but the sign is there. So, but we didn't, we weren't not, we were not notified about this at all. And instead, I have to say, I don't know anybody that does get, well, maybe Larry Gillick gets the Laker, but nobody gets the Laker, and the, their other area that they put in, according to what he sent to me, was Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. I don't go to those places either. So the majority of people, or all 100% of the people I talked to, nobody knew about this, except for, here's the problem. When the school comes and parks right up next to you, which is what you spent your money on 41 years ago, they're right there, you're confronted with completely different situation. Now, if I try to sell my land, it's going to be devalued. That was going to be land that I was going to give to my kids when I die, okay? So that's of interest to me, that's of concern to me.
Ms. Han, Ms. Han, you've got, you have three minutes, and you're way, you're way over that already. Can I ask, how does this pertain to the city?
Okay, well, I talked to Jasper a little bit, and I talked to Nick, and it really does and does not pertain to the city. What it is all about is that there's a lot of those taxpayers that are angry, unhappy with the system. Now, I have heard that it is the responsibility of the city to let us know that this was going to happen, and even though.
I'm going to stop you right there. You're absolutely wrong.
Well, I think you could finish my first.
Because, so just let me explain real quick. The city is a governing body, and the school district is a governing body, two separate entities. No way, shape, or form are we related in governance. We are separate taxing authorities. We do not do school business, they do not do city business. It is not our city's council's responsibility, nor should we get involved in school elections, okay? So if, if that's your, your ask, or whatever, that is.
No, it's, no one's there.
Okay.
Lisa, what I was trying to say is, when a, when they pull permits to do the work, that's when, I understood from Nick or something, that's when the city sends out a notice, once the permit is pulled, okay?
No, okay, so again.
That's what I got from Nick.
Yep, let me, no, let me tell you something. If, if a permit requires what's called a public hearing, then you would get notified. But generally, and in my understanding with, with what's going on at the school district, they are going to be applying for permits, building permits, excavation permits, all of those permits do not require a public hearing, okay? Having said that, we as a city must, and I have to say must, 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 approve a permit if it meets all of our regulations and all of our ordinances and requirements. We cannot legally hold up that permit or say no. So again, if they meet all of the regulations and all of the codes and standards that are city applicable, we have to, by state statute and by the law, we must issue those permits.
So even when, in closing.
Thank you.
I knew that'd make you smile. So, so, so we are left to simply, I wish you could have seen, maybe you should let me have this letter. So we are left to have the lights in our house, the sound system in our house, the people pulling and driving and parking, and, you know, pulling around the driveway, the dogs barking, the kids racing by, the litter, and all, we're supposed to just take that, in other words.
Well, again, I'm not sure.
Plus the devaluation of the property.
Right, well, we, again, we, we, they have a.
I want you to understand what's going on in your city, so that was, you should know, I mean, you would want to know, if, if somebody was going to release anthrax, and the city voted, okay, yeah, well, we understand that the scientists think it's important to find out what the study would be if we released anthrax in a pub. So we're going to pick Sunnyfield, we're not going to tell them we're going to do it. That would be a problem for anyone who lived on Sunnyfield, because they would sell their house for the.
So Ms. Han, I'm not here to argue with you.
I'm just saying.
I'm just telling you what our legal obligations are, and so, so with that.
Compared to lights and people on your property and all that, we, they still have to comply with the law. If it's a nuisance and people are using your property, then you call chief or the police, non-emergent number, and then there's a report, and then there'll be something that we could look at if it becomes a nuisance.
Well.
They have to follow the rules for lighting and everything, correct?
Well, I should, I should follow those.
There are deadlines, I mean, they can't just do whatever they want, so.
Okay, well, then, once this all happens, we're going to have to, we're going to have to be chatty with the police to have constant people on our road, so that, like, they go 50 miles an hour, 60, they kill three more dogs. So it's a problem.
Okay, thank you.
If you're giving me everybody else a sign.
Okay, well, so we also have, Mr. Donahue, do you want to, you're signed up?
Anything else I want to say?
Okay, and then we have a Paul, is it Selway? I'm sorry.
I was just signing in, so I'm good.
Okay, so you're not here to speak?
No.
All right, okay. And then we have Jack, is it Perry?
Correct.
Thank you. This is not regarding school, so.
It is not.
Okay.
It is not. It's Jack Curry from the Taff Law Firm, and I had a chance to talk to Mayor Whelan just for a minute before we started, and she, she begged me not to get into legalese, so I promise not to do that. And we have a dispute that is along hardscrabble, and you got, I think, an email from, from Mr. Krugel about this, and it's an issue that's gone on, I think, over two years. There was 18 months of demolition, and I know I've heard about it on a daily basis since October last year, where there have been trucks lined up all over. I, I thought it was, I just assumed it was an overreaction, so I went out there on a couple of different occasions and realized, no, this is, this is a problem. And so, and it's been wonderful. Your city administrator, I work with cities and counties all over the state, usually suing them, so, full disclosure, but your city administrator has been wonderful.
But you're not suing us, right?
Yeah, not at all.
Just wanted to make it clear.
Well, in fact, Mayor, that's why I'm here, is to, the citizen I'm here for absolutely does not want us to the city, and when you're working with someone like, like Mr. Krugel, why would you want to do that? We don't want to do that. The idea here is, we have to do something, and the city attorney and I have a disagreement as to what authority you have, and so we really have two options, is, is, is we either fight it out in court and see who wins, and we both make a lot of money, but that's not what we want to do. We want to try and find a solution, because the legal dispute doesn't limit itself to hardscrabble. It is an issue that applies across the entire city, and we hired a land use consultant to figure out, okay, even though I sue cities, I don't study their codes the way, and see how does this, this situation relate across the state, and she picked six, seven different cities. It's like, what you guys have here, whether I'm right, or your city attorney's right, doesn't matter. It's an issue, every other municipality and every other county, you, they have control over obstructions in the road, because you have to. You can't allow people parking here, but the way this ordinance is written, there's a conflict between, or the perceived conflict, doesn't matter, but between lawyers, as to there's a utility permit and there's an obstruction permit. I think they're separate, your attorney says, I'm full of it, it doesn't matter, we just have to resolve it and figure, because I don't think we disagree on the need to have for you guys to have authority to get rid of vehicles that are there day after day after day, and parking closer and closer, the more we complained, the closer the trucks were parked, which was fairly unnecessary, and they picked up the wrong guy, because this guy, he made his money building hospital professional buildings in every city in the country, and so he knows how to comply with these ordinances, and he knows there's not a jurisdiction in this country that allows obstruction of roadways, because it's unsafe. So our plea is, is to, for this group, the sooner the better, so that we can do this the old-fashioned way, but have a special meeting or something where we can try to resolve this thing, and it may well need some sort of revision to the ordinance, but this is an issue that needs to be addressed sooner than later.
And so I think, so, it's a lot of information, Mr. Perry, and a lot of legalese that we can't get into tonight, as you know. So I'm going to ask the council, can we bring this back at our next work session? Then that way, we can dive into it, kind of dive into it a lot deeper. Now, I'm, having said that, so we can do that, having said that, our next meeting isn't until March 18th. So in the meantime, so this regards, this is in regarding to parking on hardscrabble right now, okay?
Correct.
Like you said, it may require a broader look, citywide. So could we put up to kind of, let's say, appease, if you will, some no parking signs closer to, to your client's driveway? I know we have it on one side already, so they can't park on that side. Is there anything until the 18th that we can do to kind of ease the pain, so to speak?
Mayor Whelan, whatever, I trust your city administrator to figure out what to do.
Okay.
I think he's done a lot of things, he's, I mean, he has given us a lot of, a lot of ideas, none of them have really worked, but that's not the fault of the city.
Right.
I don't believe, I think it's, it's people who are abusing the system. But what I would suggest, if I may object, is that it would be very helpful, since time is important, because this person's residence, patience is understandably waning, is perhaps the city attorney and I coordinated with the city administrator to figure out some language that maybe could solve this problem, so that you would have something to look at?
Hold on, so it still would require it to come back to the council, and we'd have to do a work session and discuss it, and then it would have to go to a regular council meeting to be passed, and if it's a, if it's a planning and zoning ordinance, I don't think it is, so, thank you, because otherwise, it would have to go to the planning commission. So having said that, how, David, would you be working with David? Would you be working with staff, or, or how much time is this going to require? I guess we'd have to kind of know, and are you willing to pay for our attorney time? I guess that would be the question.
I can't do that.
Okay.
But I can, I mean, I think the easiest way, and I think your city attorney wants to, wants to discuss this and say whatever, but we could easily draft, we could do a redlined version, say, what about this, and then she can mark it up and, or start over, whatever, so as to cut down your attorney time.
Sarah, do you want to weigh in?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I can certainly take a look at a proposed ordinance. I would also want city staff to take a look at that, that would probably include the city engineer and the director of public works, and possibly the chief of police as well.
Okay, because I know, I mean, it's not, again, I'm, it's not just hardscrabble, it could be all over our city. So if you're okay with that, they can work with staff and legal counsel and then come back, and it would still be back here on the 18th of March. Is that doable? Let me ask you, David, staff, is that doable, you think, to bring it back on the 18th?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I, I think it depends on how quickly he gets us the proposed language.
Okay.
You know, if he sends it to us on the 17th, then obviously that's not going to work. You know, and then we have to route it around to the various city staff people for their review and comment.
Okay.
Sir, we'll be, I'll be very timely.
Can I, can I interject for just a minute? I live right next door to that road, and I was recently down there and noticed all of the obstructions. I think the people that live in a hardscrabble are fortunate that there's not the amount of snow that there normally is, because if there was the amount of snow that there normally is, this would have been a really big problem, especially with piling the snow up, I mean, this would have been a nightmare. So what's to stop the homeowner from calling the police every day and having them issue a ticket? Are they parked legally?
We've done that. I mean, we really, Jasper has told us to do things like that in writing and orderly, and our guy has done that.
But is a ticket issued? Is a ticket warranted?
Madam Mayor and council, I, I am very aware of this situation. So I think, to begin with, I don't think we should be agreeing to anything at this point, because I think perception and what we've been seeing are not on the same page here. So I want to make sure that we look at this. Certainly, we want to solve the issue for everybody, but not just for one single resident. I think this is a bigger issue than one resident. So we have been called there a number of times, we have been working with the construction staff on many occasions, and we are not finding obstructions, as everyone's using that word. Certainly, when we drive through there, whether we're called there or not, if we can't get a police car, or we don't think an ambulance or a fire truck can get through there, that's going to be a problem. Staff is going to stop, get out, and they're going to go deal with that right away. And so that has happened. In most cases, that's not the case. There's just, there are a lot of vehicles parked because there's a lot of construction going on, and unfortunately, this kind of construction takes a long time, so I understand that, the annoyance with that. So we're certainly in favor of making sure the road is open. Certainly, you had mentioned snow. If that was an issue, that would create the obstruction, and we would be able to deal with that as, as needed. So to date, that has not been the case. So I just want to make sure that everybody gets to have a discussion about the facts.
Paul, you're, you're correct. I don't, we don't want to make a decision tonight, because we don't have all of the details that we need, so I would like to still bring this back at a work session, so that staff, Paul, attorneys can all give us the information and the input that we need.
Chief, when your, when your guys respond, do they take pictures of if there is an obstruction, or is that something they could start doing when they're called out there, just so when it comes back, we can see what the issue possibly would be? I mean, I live in Woodland Cove, so I deal with construction traffic all the time, every day, for the last eight years, so.
Absolutely. It's. It's, it's very similar to that, although this area has, obviously, just a fraction of the traffic. So, so this issue is not nearly to the level it is in Woodland Cove. So we're aware of it and we, we, we don't currently take pictures. In most cases, it hasn't been an obstruction. It's just been a complaint or an annoyance. And so we try to work with both sides to, to get everyone to be happy and to try to move these vehicles away from the person that isn't happy with it. So to date, that's really been the nature of it. It hasn't been, we show up and the road's blocked.
I think it wouldn't hurt us to take a look at the whole ordinance and dig into it. And again, it's not just for hardscrabble. It could be applicable throughout our entire city, so.
Mayor Wayland, if I could address the comment, I, I take complete issue with the comment.
Well, you know what? I'll give you one minute.
That's all I need. But, but I don't think that's a fair position. I live in the opposite end of the world and dealt with same sort of deal. But what Delwood does, and I have friends on the council who make sure it happens, is you have large enough acreage here, and particularly on hardscrabble, you do not need to have any vehicles parked on the roadway. That is, that is how it's done in every other city and jurisdiction. And so the question is not, can you maneuver around? Sure, you can move around, you can go the other way. The question is, 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 does the city think it's okay? And right now, they're saying that Jasper doesn't have authority to say, no, you have to stage all of your equipment on the property that's being developed. That's what it's supposed to be. And particularly for the estates that are on this, this, this area, it's crazy to say, well, I could drive around it. That's not what any other city does. Anyway, I've said enough.
And I, and I agree. I, but we, we have to look at the ordinance. We, again, without all of the input, both sides, we, we need to make that decision. So we will be, you will be in contact with our attorney. And then we will be discussing it at the March 18th meeting.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. That concludes our persons to be heard. So we will now move on to our consent agenda items. Are there any you wish to remove? All right. Otherwise, it is approving consent agenda items A through F. A is approve our city council regular meeting minutes from February 5th, 2024. B is a resolution to approve our claims. C is a resolution to reimburse, reimbursement resolution for the Wells project. D is authorizing the mayor and clerk to sign easements for the metropolitan council over city property. And E is award a park court resurfacing contract. And F is approve the renewal of professional services agreement with the LE AST for the law enforcement wellness services. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda item A through F? Thank you, Mr. Vickery. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. So we have no public hearings this evening. We'll move on to business items. And our one and only business item is approving the proposal for the pavement management work plan. Ms. Volski, I believe that's you.
Thank you, Mayor Wayland, members of council. But for you this evening, as a proposal, to update the pavement, the pavement management work plan. This work plan is used extensively by Mr. Peters and myself to develop recommendations to the council for street improvement projects. So these pavement condition inspections are typically done every three to five years. And it's a visual inspection of the surface condition of the roads within the city. It's about 52 miles of road, so it's, it's quite an endeavor. And essentially, what the, the pavement inspection does is it establishes a score, a pavement condition index, anywhere between zero and 100. Zero being a completely deteriorated street and a score of 100 being a brand new street. And so we look at those as kind of one of the first steps in developing a proposed street improvement plan to the council. And the last time this was done was September of 2021. This council is aware there's been quite a bit of work done on streets. But the, the work, the streets that haven't been worked on have been deteriorating. So we are recommending getting another inspection done this year to update those pavement scores so that we can keep moving along with our payment, pavement improvement plan. So the, the proposal is included in your packet to, to take a look at the rundown. It includes updating the city database. And they do provide some recommendations for a five-year capital improvement plan. And in the past, what we have done with the group that performs this work is we provide them what staff and council have been discussing for, for pavement conditions so that the council can see the impact of those budget dollars on, on the citywide system should that, that capital improvement plan come to fruition. So what, again, what we do is we take this information, we layer it with utility improvements, that sort of thing, to develop the capital improvement plan with, with the council. We would expect to see inspections happen this spring. And then the work, the work done on the capital improvement plan coming through the summer. And then we could come back in the fall and present those findings to the council. It does include a map, which is a nice visual for the council to see color-coded what streets lie within what pavement condition index range. So it's, it's a nice idea to, to see where pavement conditions are deteriorating. And we might want to look at doing a project in the future. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that the council may have with this proposal.
So I just had one comment, and I spoke to you about this earlier. On page 95, it lists that, and it says, that WSB will attend a meeting in person with the city. Well, you're already here. So I really would like to remove that $2,500 because I think that you're well-versed and knowledgeable that any questions that the council may have between you and Gary, they could be answered. So I don't think we need an extra person if we could just remove that from the contract, if that's okay? Because you're here anyway.
Yeah, certainly, Mayor Wayland, if I could just expand for the, the council members that weren't, weren't present last time we did this. The last time we did have our pavement expert come in and present the findings, and I think it was a good education component. But certainly, I, I feel that, you know, the council's really been very supportive of these street improvement projects and that I can certainly handle that. And we could, we could, if that's what the council would like to see, we can back that $2,500 out of the proposed fee. And I can present those findings to the council on my own.
Okay.
So it says every three to five years. It's obviously not been three years. So why?
More.
Well, no, it was done in 2021 in September. So, I mean, we know what projects we need to do next year. We're planning the big ones. Does this need to be done before we start those projects?
Mayor, Mayor Wayland and Councilmember Refkin, that's, I appreciate the question. So it's not a half to half? We certainly, the last time that we did the pavement, the pavement inspections was 2021. So they were done in the spring of 2021. September of 2021 was when we presented the, the findings. And at that point, we had gone through, I believe it was a four, we went on a four-year gap between those. We can certainly look at having some flexibility built in. It's not required to do it every three years. We are trying to establish how the roads are deteriorating. So certainly, the more data points that we have, the more accurate we can see, you know, okay, well, this road's holding up a little bit better than we expected. So we were just looking to get back in sync with that three-year cycle. If the council would like to look at, you know, spreading that out to a four-year plan, we can certainly look to do that. We do have some, some recommendations coming through. But we also don't want to lose sight of some of those roads that might be deteriorating where we can come in with a mill and overlay now and extend that life versus if we wait another year or two, if the pavement condition continues to deteriorate and to a point where a mill and overlay is no longer effective. There's no hard and fast answers for that. That's the difficult part. There's so many components that go into the pavement condition and, you know, how a road deteriorates, and it's hard for us to make those predictions. So we do really rely on these inspections to come up with some recommendations.
So this, this is in line with kind of what I'm talking about. So was this proposed last year so that it's built into a budget, this cost?
Well, it's part of our road project budget.
Yeah, but are, do we expect this to come up at this time with this?
We did. Yeah.
Okay, no problem.
We also decreased the road budget at the end of the year last year.
Yeah, I know, I do remember. Yeah. I, I just want to be sure that when, when these projects come up, that they're not surprises.
Well, my point is, pending if we do this this year versus next year, is this going to change any of the projects we have planned for the next two years? Based on what we're going to talk about tomorrow? Like, does this impact those at all?
Might not impact 2024, 25, but it might impact 26.
Wouldn't it make sense, then, to wait another year and do it in 2025? So you have a...
I think the only problem would be the time. And you'd be talking about, you wouldn't get the results back into form. And I think they're probably garying ass and want to start talking with the 2026 project in spring, summer of 25.
Especially with 26, we like to get that data sooner than later because it is going to be a big, massive project again. And that data would really be helpful to know what we're planning. Like, like Ellison said, some of these roads are turning from mill and overlay to reclaims. More that we know upfront that what we can expect will help us budget for that. You know, we can say, yeah, hey, we just jumped from, you know, six overlays here to, you know, three overlays and three now reclaims. So just kind of knowing what we're expecting ahead of time would help greatly.
So we know which projects we're going to do in 2025. We're going to, we're still on track to do the trillium reclamation, right? So what we are, what we need to know is what are we going to do in 26? And we need to know that this year, or the fall of this year, so we can start planning it, especially if there's assessments.
But the 2026 is all big projects. It's not a mill, I mean, like, the, the roads we're doing there, we already know they're bad. Right? The big project, we already know the ones that we're talking about for 2026 are bad.
Is there a difference if any of them are reconstruct versus reclamation?
Yeah, some of them are going to be, I mean, all, one or two areas are going to be completely reconstructed. Some that are going to be reclamation at this point. We're hoping a lot of it's mill and overlay, but, you know, that's sort of be nice to know what our way up against.
But if we already know, I, I guess I'm not, I, I'm not fully comprehending why this is going to benefit it if we already know we're doing reclaims. We already know which ones need to be reconstructed. If the mill and overlay suddenly becomes a reclaim or reconstruction, I mean, the budget for 2026 is huge. It's probably just going to get pushed down the road even farther then.
Yeah.
I mean, we're not going to do a $12 million bond in 2026, so.
Will it be, will it make a difference which roads we do? So let's take Kathleen's example, okay? So for instance, let's just say we're thinking about doing a mill and overlay of, I don't know, XYZ roads. But now, all of a sudden, maybe one of those is a reclamation. Will that, I mean, how do we know that? Because what if we, so here's the thing, what happened back in, I can't remember what date it was. But we were going to do a mill and overlay in Crest Ridge, if you remember. And we went to do the mill and overlay in Crest Ridge and whoops, wow, now it's a reclamation. So is that what we're trying to avoid, knowing kind of ahead of time it's going to for sure be a reclamation versus a mill and overlay?
Sure. Mayor Wayland, if I may, so I, there's, there's two, two pieces of data that we look for in, in providing recommendations for projects. So first is the condition of the streets, which is what this proposal is about. So Councilmember Refkin, to your point, what we're trying to identify in getting these updated numbers is taking a look at pavements that are degrading, that are still within a mill and overlay category, but they're deteriorating maybe a little faster than we thought. Or, you know, all of a sudden, they're on the radar when they weren't three years ago. Because once we get, once we get to a reclamation, of course, it's, it's a much more expensive project. And, and how, how that relates to capital improvement planning is we have opportunities and, and there's budget scenarios that are built into this proposal where we could take a look at, well, does it make sense to go and maybe put the, the roads that the surface condition is in poor condition and would be a reclaim? Do we want to putting those on hold?
Yeah.
And reallocating those dollars to a mill and overlay to try to, to preserve some of those pavements? So, so again, this is the surface condition. And then second to that, once, once we've identified scope, we get those pavement cores, which we've shared in the past. And, you know, at the next quarry project that the council would approve, I will bring in cores too, because I think that was really helpful.
To see that.
To see what, and so the pavement cores, what those do is, okay, we saw the surface. Now we're going to go and take a look at, how is the, the, what kind of distresses are they seeing within the pavement? So you can see if the, I'm not a pavement expert. I rely on them to provide me those recommendations. But, you know, is it, because that's happened. Exactly. That, on the surface, boy, that looks like a mill and overlay. But had we had a core, it would have shown deterioration of the pavement, of the binder or whatever technical term they want to use. That once you remove that, that top two inches of the surface, there's not enough strength in that pavement underneath. So there's, like I said, there's, those are the two data points that we look at in establishing the capital improvement plan. With this proposal, the pavement condition being the first step at the 10,000-foot level, if you will.
Maybe another question to Gary would be, so Gary, are you seeing for the quotes unquotes "mill and overlay" projects that we're thinking about? Or are you seeing more stresses in those roads? And so you kind of want to take a closer look at them?
You know, the biggest thing with this, the planning of it helps is when you're looking at that road and you can plan ahead, we can kind of plan for, okay, if they're going to become, if they're getting to the point where they dropped down to, say, below 50, now if we look at what we've done in the past with these thin mill and overlays, do we do a thin mill and overlay on it? Have you done a King's Point? We did everything out of the game park to try to get us that five, six, seven years down the road to help keep that road together for a long, long life, get us down a ways. And then, you know, so we're not having two years of block project, another two years of block project. Now I can push stuff out five, six, seven years before we have to, you know, go back through it. We know, we know that that's under their shot. It's going to be a reclamation. We know that ahead of time, so we can kind of plan ahead and take little chunks here and there as we go. That's kind of what this helps us with, too. You know, just kind of look at that surface, you know, deterioration on there. You know, it would, you know, is it going to be the tell-all? No, it's going to take that in the quarry. But it's a twofold system. This does help kind of the preliminary stuff, so.
So it's either doing it this year or next year, basically. So, and if it's in the budget for this year, I think it will help us plan a little bit better for future years. Comments, questions? Kathleen?
We can talk about it more tomorrow. We can talk about whether or not we want to bounce it out to four years or keep it three. And that can be part of the strategy session.
I just don't necessarily, I mean, I'm not opposed to doing it. It's just I don't know if we need to do it this year versus next year, given that we already know the bad roads that need to be done with the big bonding bill that we have planned for 2026. And with the amount of road projects we have and the, the road, like, it's not going to...
But I think what they're saying, though, is the bad roads that we have.
But we can't keep seeing them down the road even more.
No, but we might want to do mill and overlays on the ones that are still good to preserve them versus doing the bad roads that are already gone.
But, but, so then we wouldn't do the big project in 2026? We just do mill and overlays?
Maybe not.
So if the bad roads be pushed back another year?
Might be.
Or more. I mean, it gets to a point where the road's shot, so.
Right, but the construction costs keep going up, so.
Yeah, it, yeah, it's gone. I mean, you're going to have a cost no matter what. At some point, you got to keep the roads that are in that three-quarter range.
Saveable.
Good. It's that delicate balance. You let the bad go bad. They're already bad, pardon my expression, shitty, but let them go. I mean, and just, you know, do the bare minimum. But keep that stuff that's in that three-quarter range, good. You know, that's, that's the big balancing point. And that has not been done in this city. You know, I mean, this should have been started 20 years ago.
Right.
I mean, we've, we've got roads, Trillium has not been touched since it was put in the nineties. It should be on its third mill and overlay by now.
Right.
You know, it's not. So this is the thing that we're running into. You're going to see, I mean, I'm, I'm going to be quite frank with you, you're going to get more and more mill and over, uh, reclamation as we go because...
If we don't do mill and overlays?
Well, we're going to...
Or don't try and save the three-quarter range?
He's saying we're going to need them anyways, because they haven't been done. We're, we're just going to find more roads with more problems.
You know, I mean, that's why, you know, you kind of look at what we're doing for this, for next year. Yeah, hermitage, great road, got great rating, but the one, the lifetime, lifespan is there. It need, it's at that point in the pavement management plan to put that mill and overlay, get that back up to the hundred percent and let it slowly come back down with you. You know, that's what we're trying to, you know, keep. So keep those that, you know, Trill, uh, Trillium unfortunately has turned into, I call it a, a full debt removal and overlay, reclamation, or whatever you want to call it, you know. But if it would have been done when I wanted to do it six, eight years ago, it wouldn't have been.
Well, we didn't have the pavement management plan and we didn't have the PCI ratings either. So this is something we've been wanting to do for years. I wanted to do it twenty years ago, but, yeah.
We had it way back then. It's been around for a while.
Yeah. If, if I may, um, add a couple of things. So the PCI is kind of a program that you buy into. You commit to a, you, you commit to a cycle, right? Three years, four years. I, I think we've had some flexibility in the past where we've done it three or four years. If you want to table it, we can table it and kind of see what, what goes on the summer. I think if we want to do it, we could still do it this fall or end of summer. Uh, or would it not make sense to do it end of summer?
I mean, we can certainly look at what the, so typically we've, we've, in the past, we've relied on seasonal help to, to help out with some of these inspections. But we're moving to more of an automated process, so a fall inspection is, I, I can check to make sure it's, it's tech, that we would have.
But if we're going to do it in the fall, then why, why delay it? Why not do it sooner than later then so that we have the information by the fall so that decisions can be made for twenty six? I mean, that's, we're going to spend, if we're going to spend the money in twenty twenty four, one way or the other, then maybe sooner than later is better.
Yeah, so I guess my point is, it's a program, you kind of buy into it. Once you do it, it's good to stay on the same schedule because in the program, if you looked at it, there's degradation curves, right? You put a number in and you have a general idea of what it does year to year, but you'll get surprises once in a while. So a check in every three or four years is good because you'll, you'll be able to identify those and maybe move those up a little bit on your schedule.
So the one that was done before twenty twenty one, when was that one done, do you know?
I believe that was twenty seventeen. We wanted a four-year cycle then.
So that should, to your point, shouldn't we stay on the four-year cycle then?
I mean, yeah, it's up, it's up to City Council. I mean, really it is. I think there's some timing things that Gary and Allison have brought up that might make sense if we have more data for the twenty twenty six projects. You know, those are likely going to morph and change a little bit. Like, we're going to have a conversation tomorrow. If that project looks identical to what we come up with tomorrow, I'd be surprised. You know, there's going to be things that pop up in the next two years that might make Gary think, hey, we got to move this one off the list because if we don't, now it's going to move to a reclamation as opposed to a mill and overlay, which I know is, you know, more affordable, so.
I think that's what, what Gary is trying to prevent is do more mill and, do, take a look and make sure we're getting the mill and overlays done so they don't turn into reclamation projects. We can put this on hold. We can talk about this at a strategic planning mission, uh, meeting, mission, um, tomorrow and then bring it back at our March eighteenth meeting.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, we can certainly, you know, whatever the council would like to do for a timeline. We don't want to push this, this, this as a, you know, it's a must-have. You know, the, the goal here is to explain what the data provides from a planning perspective and if there's, um, you know, more discussion that council would like to have at the strategic planning session. And I'd certainly table it and bring it back when the council is ready for it.
Okay? So we'll, we'll table it and bring it...
They haven't said anything. So I mean, if you four all want to do it, then it's fine. I mean, I'm not opposed to being the odd man out. They haven't said anything, so I don't know what they're...
Anna said something. She said, if it's in the budget, I'm fine.
Yeah, that was, that was one thing. And, and then the other thing is, I think we should hear more tomorrow. So let's table it. I mean, then you, maybe you'll feel better. I have, I, I feel like I don't, I don't know enough about the technical aspects of it to really know whether I'm getting a sale, which is probably your feeling, whether I'm getting a sale or whether it really needs to be done. And I have no way of knowing that. So I either have to believe everything they're saying or push back. And you're doing pushback to me. So, so basically, let's hear what has to be said tomorrow and go from there.
Well, since you want me to say something. I, I go, all the taxpayers deserve nice roads. So if I'm on that road that needs to be, have a full reclamation, I am not happy that you're letting me live there and you're fixing the road that's not as bad. I mean, I would be losing my mind, so I...
I'm looking at tax stuff, yeah, we'll talk about it tomorrow. And I, I understand that aspect too, but, yeah. We're talking also tax dollars, but yeah, yeah, exactly. All right. So we'll, we'll, we'll all think about it this evening and, and discuss it more tomorrow and, and if need be, bring it back on the eighteenth. So, um, that concludes our business items. And so we'll move on to administrative items, staff reports, election updates.
I just have not much, just basically a timeline for you guys. So we've been doing absentee balloting. We started the direct balloting on Friday, March sixteenth. We will be open next Saturday, March second, from nine to three for people's residence...
You started it on February sixteenth.
Well, oh, yes, sorry.
Thank you. You said March sixteenth, so just, just for correction, February sixteen.
I'm wishing it was after March fifth, right?
Yeah, that's right, okay.
Um, so then, and then Monday, March fourth, will be, um, open an extra half hour, will be open till five. And then the actual presidential nomination primary will be held March fifth from seven AM to eight PM.
Okay. In all the precincts.
Correct.
And there's a new precinct.
Minnesota Baptist Church.
Please put it on the website and Facebook page and Twitter. Okay. All right, all right, thank you. Any questions? All right, um, future agenda items?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of council, I can just kind of give a brief update. You've seen, our agendas have been fairly light this year so far. Um, it's kind of a product of having a very busy year last year. We had a lot of street projects and those types of things. We have strategic planning tomorrow, so that'll likely drum up some more work session. It's a pretty hefty agenda if you haven't looked at it already. We're likely going to run out of time, um, so we'll have to make a decision if we want to add certain things to future work sessions, uh, future city council meetings, or if we want to schedule another strategic planning session, um, tomorrow from twelve-thirty to three-thirty is what we have scheduled, so. But really, we have the street project coming up this year that you'll start seeing some approvals for, you know, those types of things. But really, you're going to see some movement on some of the water projects, the well project, probably some more information updates from A to S on, um, our, our water plan and some of the, the task orders that we've authorized already. I'm hopeful that we'll be able to give some updates on some, you know, our bonding requests or other grants that we're going for, uh, for our water project. Uh, there's been a few out there. There's some federal appropriations grants that are just opening up right now that we're going to try to get some, some dollars for our water treatment plant for. So, um, there will be more to come. So just, you know, if, if you're getting anxious and you're like, well, you know, we've had some light agendas, one, one business item here and there, there will be some things that, that come up, so. Any questions with that?
The only other thing, I, I don't want to lose sight of it, and it's been kind of an ongoing thing, is the dog barking ordinance or the dog barking issue. So, um, I know we've been kind of waiting until that hearing has happened and I believe that was at the end of this month unless it's been postponed, but, so.
Correct.
So keep that on your radar screen.
It is, it is. And I've, I've been communicating with some of the residents there.
Okay.
Um, the trial is set for February twenty seventh right now.
Right.
I'm not sure if it'll get delayed or not. I'll have to, I have the case number and I can follow that. But that is something that's on, on our radar. The legislative session opened up, uh, in Minnesota here. There's one, uh, bill that is, I think, of particular in, interest to the city. Um, it's HF forty-four oh-nine. And it's regarding zoning and parking and mostly zoning type things. Really, what it does is it removes some of the local control of us saying, a lot, a lot.
A lot, yeah.
Um, so, uh, that went through committee. It has a House number, still going through some, some, some committees. I will note, I've been communicating with Andrew Myers, he's on one of the committees. He was the only one who voted against it, uh, yesterday, uh, in committee. So, um, you know, he's said that the majority of his cities that he represents, that they don't want this. So, um, that's very good that, that he listens to us. We really appreciate that. So, um, you know, we'll kind of track that and we'll see where that goes. But i- if it does get enacted, um, that, that'll mean some things for us, so.
That would be...
Done, I think that's...
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean...
That's putting it mildly.
It would be a significant change. We wouldn't be able to really determine where high density housing would be built. We wouldn't be able to determine, um, how big of a parking lot's required for like a grocery store. That would be kind of up to the developers, um, in that sense, so. And then we would be stuck with having to figure out how to supply them with water and infrastructure and that type of thing. So it's kind of a little backwards, I think, as far as a lo- local authority feels.
Yeah. Okay.
That's all I have.
Any, any other staff updates?
I, just really quickly, Mayor, I can just piggyback a, a bit on the persons-to-be-heard discussion and what the mayor had said about, um, what the process would be with the school. So just a quick update, staff has met with an architectural firm and an engineering firm that the school has hired for these, these various projects that they're doing. Right now, the tennis court is their priority. They plan on starting construction June of this, this year for that, uh, construction. Um, and that's really all they're focused on right now. Um, and that, that in and of itself does not raise to a level to need a land use review. Uh, it's an accessory structure. They're going to meet all of our zoning requirements, as the, the mayor said, with setbacks. Lighting has to be downcasted and shielded. And so we'll, we'll look at all those things. Engineering, we'll look at it from a stormwater runoff standpoint. It's going to need a general wetland review. So all of those things will be looked at, um, when, when they come in for, for permit. And then, um, they have phases that go all the way through twenty twenty seven that they're looking at with their, their projects. And again, the way that they're doing them, they're all, you know, small enough in terms of the exterior work that's happening that it's likely not going to, to raise to a level that it would need to go for some sort of land use review. It's all likely going to be just an administrative review. And like I said, we'll look at it from a setback standpoint and all of those things. The building official obviously is going to get involved here at some point once they start doing all the internal remodeling. But, um, just an FYI, that's what, um, we're looking at from a process standpoint. If something does raise, we'll certainly, uh, put them, you know, through the process. But at this point, nothing appears like that isn't the case. So just heads up there. And then we, uh, do need a liaison. We are having a planning commission meeting next Monday.
Okay. Is there somebody that is available? Would be the twenty, what, Monday would be?
Six.
Twenty-six? I am not, I've been two now, so, or one? Anyhow, I was at that last one.
I had a PTA meeting.
Okay. Peter? Okay, Claudia?
I think I can.
All right.
If you can't, just let me know and then I'll just miss the PTA meeting and make it.
All right.
I think I can.
Thank you, ladies. All right. So Claudia and Kathleen is back up.
Sounds good.
All right. Okay, anything else?
Um, otherwise we'll go to council reports, um, real quick. Let's see, I attended the Parks Commission meeting and one of our, um, basically the, the whole evening was, um, just coming up, kind of brainstorming. They really wanted to try and do some, um, uh, park programs, if you will. And one of the ideas they came up with that could possibly happen this year is ice cream in the park. And they, they're looking at, a couple of the park commissioners are going to be inquiring about donations of ice cream, of course. And they said that they would also, um, uh, volunteer to be at the parks to facilitate the event. Um, just, and it would happen, uh, maybe twice in the summer, um, on, on a Thursday, once in July and once in August, um, if they can pull the donations together. So there shouldn't be, um, any staff time or any cost to the city for this event. If they don't get the, um, donations, then they wouldn't have, have it. And they were just talking about doing like, um, ice cream, uh, you know, maybe six o'clock or five o'clock or whatever, six o'clock after dinner, of course. And, um, maybe having a lady there or a person there that would do face painting, some kind of fun activity. So they would do it twice, uh, once maybe in X park and then another time in a different park. So I'll keep you guys posted on that. Again, we're, we're thinking, uh, no staff time and no, um, no cost to that. There's other ideas that they had that we'll be rolling out or at least putting out in a more formal manner. And those would have to be more appropriately, um, budgeted for and so on. And we'll, we'll see about that. I also attended the regional council mayor's meeting and, um, the primary individual was from the DNR talking about, uh, climate change and kind of talking about the difference between weather and climate. So two ve- two different things. Um, it was interesting, um, and yes, we are on an upward trend. And, um, a lot of things are going to be affecting the southern part of our country initially, more so than the northern part of our country was kind of interesting. And I won't go into all the details because it was a, a lengthy presentation. And then, um, had a public safety, um, communications or committee meeting. Of course Jasper and myself and then, um, Administrator Brenda Fisk and of course our Chief of Police. We just talked about our activities reports and, um, we talked about the new officers that we've, um, sworn in and that are on board right now. And also showed off our brand-new, um, fitness and wellness center provided by Lifetime Fitness. And we're hoping to have a ribbon cutting, I believe you thought, April first?
Yeah, I did not mention that. So April first, nine AM.
Nine AM?
I will be sending something out so that we've been, been trying to coordinate with Lifetime to, to see if we can get, um, Mr. Accardi to, to show up. So we'll see. He's scheduled right now. We hope he keeps his schedule.
So, and, um, and then the, um, yeah, so that's kind of the, the gist of that meeting. And then I was at the Northwest League meeting. And the presenter was Ryan Wilson, who is our new, um, MinDOT area representative. A, a lot of it didn't pertain to Minatrista, except I did mention a few times about the Highway Seven corridor and Coalition. And so even though most of the cities in Northwest League are bordering fifty-five and their interests are more of Highway fifty-five and twelve, I had to bring Minatrista in and say, hey, we're interested in Highway Seven. So, um, he's also going to be part of the Highway Seven Coalition. So I made sure that he was well aware of our interest in Highway Seven. And then also yesterday, of course, um, some of us were able to attend the, um, VIP opening of MacIntunes. I have to say, it was, it's a beautiful facility. It's just gorgeous. We're so excited to have them here and the amenity that it, um, provides for our community. We wish them very, lots of, um, we wish them well and much success. And based on the facilities, I'm sure it will be a huge success. And then, um, just a few dates, save the dates. May seventh will be our State of the City address. Uh, Trista Day is, uh, May eighteenth, I believe, correct?
I'll have to check it out.
It's the third, third, yep, May eighteenth. And then June fourth is going to be our annual city bus tour. And those are the dates right now. But coming up the soonest would be May seventh, State of the City address. We will be at Borough Oaks again, Cash Bar. And, uh, so you're all invited, you and your spouses and neighbors. Get the word out and we'll have, when will it be up for, um, registration? Because it's limited seating.
Yeah, it'll probably open up April.
Okay. Right, right. What time it'll be?
Five. Oh. I should know that.
Yeah. Is it six, four?
Five thirty.
Five thirty, so, okay.
I'm not there, thank you.
Okay. So...
Give one second, I'll...
Yeah. So...
Yeah, five thirty, seven thirty.
Five thirty, seven thirty. But you can tell your neighbors. Okay. But yes, I understand band concert is definitely more important. What grade? Oh, yes, that'll be fun. No, the fun thing about, the fun thing about that is to see the improvement.
Yeah.
So, anyhow, with that, that's all I have. Any other reports? Any other reports?
I was at the Mackentones VIP, and I shopped there this morning. It's gorgeous and everything seems to be working great, so I love it and it's incredibly convenient. And then Ann and I are attending a Personnel Committee meeting tomorrow before our strategic planning three-hour session.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
I'm just with the Personnel Committee.
I just have a small announcement. So with the Gillespie Center, I met with Rhonda Nelson today. She is the new interim director that was hired, so she'll be there at least three months, maybe nine months at, at the most. She's dynamic. She was the Chief of Staff at United Healthcare for many years and the head of all programs for Target for five years, so she's really dynamic. And what she wants to do, she's actually hosting a meeting on, which she'd love anyone to come to that's, feels like they can contribute in some way. She's hosting a meeting on March 9th called Vision Mission, the Vision Mission Workshop, and she wants to take the Gillespie and change it from a senior center to more of a community center. They also want to kind of change the way it looks, and they've already got that in the budget. And so today, I spoke with a very well-known architect, he actually did the Twins Stadium, and he is going to, for free, do an update, like how he thinks for very little money they could transform the look of that building with paint and a new sign, new signage, new lighting, you know, things like that. So she really wants to change the, and I think it's a valuable part of our community, and a lot of people from Minatrista, you, is the Gillespie Center. She's going to really try to reach out and find what this, what the community wants, you know, do they want more cooking classes or do they want more tax advice, you know, those kind of things? And she is trying to get away from membership, you know, $40 a year membership, because you really don't get anything for your membership, and more of a support this organization because it's important. So be a supporter and, you know, maybe have a little sign in your yard that you support the community center, not the senior center that looks like an old folks' home. So anyway, that's where we're, that's really all I have to say there. The Westaka Community Commerce Organization is hosting a blood drive tomorrow with the Gillespie Center, and they have a movie night the next night for kids, so lots going on.
All right.
Well, I attended the Pioneer Sarah Creek Waterhead District meeting, and this chart up here shows the results of the...
Speak into your microphone.
This chart in front of us shows the results of the alum treatment at the south basin of Whaletail. And so to the far right is when they did the treatment, and you can see the, the phosphorus level is the gold. You can see how that really dropped, and it dropped below the dotted red line, which is impairment. So you can see it dropped dramatically. And then the load of the chlorophyll dropped even more. You can see a big drop there. So both numbers are well below the impaired level.
Thirty-six, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's just dramatic. And then on the top, the, the blue bars, that shows how far down you can see from the surface.
Water clarity.
Yeah, and so you can see the impairment line is at one and a half meters, maybe nine or 10 feet, I guess.
One and a half meters is about two, three, six, yeah, seven, eight feet.
So very dramatic, so we're really excited about that. And the water flows from that south basin to the north basin of the Main Lake, so it's gonna get some benefit from that, too. And they have decided to wait until 2025 to do the second treatment because they felt that that would give the longest-lasting effect. So, so very, very good news there. And then we also talked, the only other thing in Minatrista that it's kind of an issue is the Little Lawn Lake is the most pristine lake in the metro area, and it has built around it some parkland to protect it. But there is a problem with the, I think it's a Vine, yeah, Kingswood Ravine, where the Kingswood Road goes by it, and it, we're starting to get runoff from the road that's creating silt, you know, going into the lake. And so it's a rather, well, it's a problem to get it fixed because it's not a phosphorus issue, and the, I've learned that the Waterhead District's mainly interested in trying to reduce the pollution. And so they're not real excited, like, well, you know, we're not gonna get much bang for a buck on...
You might not even qualify for grants. That's the other issue.
Yeah, it's been a, they've tried others, and then same with the Habitat, because it's like, well, it's not really ruining the Habitat. So they, they may come to us, I guess what I'm saying on some of this, and we'll just have to see. So that, you know, as I get more information on that, I'll, I'll bring it to council.
Yeah, okay. I'm assuming Three Rivers would partner in, in Pioneer Sarah Creek as well?
I think so, yeah. Of course, the Three Rivers people who runs the product are attentive, so.
Okay. Keep us posted, because yeah, it is, it is the cleanest lake in Hennepin County.
Yeah, we want to protect that.
Yeah, yeah, it is. All right. Anything else? Otherwise, is there a motion to adjourn?
How about closed session?
All right, I guess we can be, darn it. All right. Is there a motion? Is there a motion to go into closed session? Thank you, Mr. Vickery. Is there a second?
No, we have to read the whole, yeah, we gotta read the whole thing.
Oh, I don't have it here. Oh, okay.
Hold on, my, my computer just...
I can pull it up real quick, you guys. Okay, we have the, make a motion to go into closed session for the City Administrator Performance Review. Closed session pursuant to MN... 13D point 05 subdivision 3A to evaluate the performance of an individual who is subject to authority.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So we will go into closed session as soon as the recording is off and... Okay. We are in our regular meeting again, and we just completed Mr. Krugel's annual performance review, and you will bring that back with staff's recommendations at our next council meeting, which will be March 18th. So with that, um...
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Is there a second? So who seconded that? Okay, Mr. Vickery seconded that. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes 5-0. We are adjourned. Happy March.